All right, it is, we're ready. It is 2:04 on January 22nd, 2020. This is a scheduled workshop, an administrative workshop. It is called to order. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll, please.
Commissioner Gold.
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce.
Aye.
Chair Pash.
Aye.
All right, moving on-
Motion carried unanimously. Sorry.
Moving on to projects. Three A, discuss five-member Board of Commissioners with Citizen Revenue Task Force. Ms. Schmelzer.
Yes, so, um, as you know, we've heard, we hear from our constituents that instead of raising taxes, we need to find creative ways to save money. We've also heard some concerns over the years about fair review, you know, should there be more than a three-member board so two members can discuss something? There's been a lot of discussion, I think, over whether or not to have a three- or a five-member board. So what I did was I just put together a proposal of what that could look like, or some things that we could consider, and the board decided to send it to a workshop so that they could meet with the Citizen Revenue Task Force to see if this might be something they may be able to look at and come back and make a recommendation to the board as to whether or not the board should proceed with putting this on the ballot. So, um, the board's decision ultimately will be, do we put this on a ballot? Do we ask the voters to approve a three-member board, or, I'm sorry, a five-member board, or leave it the way it is? If we want to put that to the voters in May, we would have something, we would need to have the paperwork and everything filed in February, so we're coming up on a tight timeframe. It was about two weeks ago when the board discussed this, and at that time it was, decided to send it forward to, I take it back, it was a while ago, and then we discussed it again in two weeks, and then it was postponed two weeks to discuss it today. But, um, so we just wanna, the board at that time had said, let's sit together with the Citizen Revenue Task Force, let them hear our concerns, our comments, let them break away, discuss it, and come back to us at a later date with some type of recommendation or their thoughts on whether they thought this was a good idea, at least from a financial standpoint.
Just for logistics, if this were to go on the ballot in May, when would that five-member board come into being? I mean, people would not have had a chance to file by the March 10th deadline, I would think.
Right. So, um, my understanding is it would not affect the current election because these people are running under the impression of a three-member board.
Okay.
So we would just wanna make sure it's very clear of when that would take place, which we could do.
Okay, to probably the next, after two years, I would think.
Correct, yeah. It's not an immediate thing if it would pass.
Okay.
So are you looking for comments from the Citizens Revenue Task Force?
Um, well, the board-
The board had wanted the task force to hear comments from the board.
So the board at that time had some things they wanted to share, and they wanted to make sure the Citizen Revenue Task Force heard their concerns or comments. So they, when they met, they had something to work with, so they weren't coming in and discussing it blindly.
Um, I've heard a number of comments from the public about having a five-member board, simply because it could be more efficient. Right now, we're expected to manage a county without being able to talk to each other except in a meeting. And I think that would help in the efficiency, as you've laid it out here, with some of the members not having a salary and the chair having a full salary. I don't think that would be a problem. I think there are probably a lot of people, in fact, I know there are, willing to serve simply because there's a lot of people in the county that serve on boards without being paid right now, and they do a fine job. What are you laughing for? You're one of those.
Twenty-some years, yeah, I've never been paid, so.
Okay. Just, just my thoughts.
Commissioner Boyce, do you have any comments?
Um, boy, it'd be a real, it'd be a real challenge to you. This is the third time today, what would I do without you?
Start filling you.
He used to never take it off, and it'd always get pulled off.
You're no help. I have several comments. You know, I'd kinda like to hear from this board, of course, we've got some distinguished people here, and I'm happy about that, of course. I don't see any, uh, I have no confidence in saving money here. Uh, I'm not, I'm not convinced that that's a reality or would be a reality. You know, what I've learned in the three years I've been here is that this is a full-time job, and I understand that there are citizens that go, well, what have you got done? Well, sparing you any of those details right now, I, other than to remind the citizens that you have to go outside the county, and you have to build bridges, you have to build relationships. I've got criticized once, whoa, why don't you work closer with the other commissioners? Well, I can name every commissioner in the five or six closest counties, and I can show you emails from them, where they have kindly returned my emails and my phone calls, and have been very interested in helping Currie County, and as senior commissioners, and now that I'm approaching my fourth year, this is my fourth year, I guess, beginning, I'm able to help some of those people. So, those relationships are very important. I had one citizen say that I had a love affair going with Railroad Siskiyou National Force Supervisor Merv George. It's taken me years, excuse me, months, to get to know him and his people, and we share some very common interests. We have mutual respect for one another. He's a Native American, I'm a native Oregonian, native Currie-Canaanian. And it's gonna bring, it's taken it, 60 hours a week to understand his philosophy, but the primary common interest we have is building back our forest and saving this spectacular part of Oregon. So, um, it's, it just takes time, and it takes commitment, and it takes, it takes three full working commissioners, plus at the very least, an office manager. Council Huddle, you were in the office for a year there between John Hitt and, oh, the Schroeder guy from Minnesota. That was a hundred thousand dollar debacle. So as long as Director Schmelzer's here, I would approach this kind of direction with some confidence. There are, the five closest counties, neighboring counties, of course, are Clamath, Jackson, Josephine, Coos, and Douglas. All have three-member boards. If this was really a productive, beneficial direction for the counties, I think one of those counties, all concerned to be larger than us, would have taken on that challenge prior to now. I can tell you that Lane County has five commissioners, they're all paid about eighty-five, ninety thousand a year. They have a county administrator, but of course, that's a county of three-quarters of a million people. Clatsop County, pushing, I think they have about 480,000 people. I was given a article sometime back from outgoing Commissioner David Brock Smith. The article was, Clatsop County with their five commissioners, three of which are volunteer. They went through five, excuse me, they went through nine county administrators in 15 years. It was a real embarrassment. I don't wanna do anything to add another layer of separation from the citizens and the people they represent. That's the beauty of our system of government, that we're accountable to the people that put us in office. And it's just like having a gavel when you were gone. That was pretty humbling. That's a, that's a real privilege. So I could go on and on, I'm just, number one, I wanna make sure that the citizens know that I'm not convinced of any savings. If you wanna do a five-member board so two commissioners can talk to one another, that has no, that has no real basis for putting the, you know, spending the money to put this on the ballot. If I had five hard-working commissioners full-time, I'm just speaking my own personal aspect here, or opinion, yeah, we could get a lot done, and we wouldn't be where we are right now. First two years that I was here was wasted, and a ton of money was wasted. This is not the remedy, though, to take care of that, in my view. Could we lead, and maybe the other five counties in this area might follow us? That's a possibility. I guess that is the burden of this group here, to understand the potential rationale behind this. I don't know why this is a priority right now with all that we're dealing with. It feels to me like there's been a real push to get this on the ballot. It's, uh, I just would rather be available for questions. I don't, when two commissioners can talk to one another, is their decision's gonna be behind closed doors? I think the public, in the two times that they voted down the change of government, looking seriously at the home rule, what was it, Measure 80, 71, I think, you know, split this county apart, there was a lot of division on that. So, yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chair, that's all I have, I think, I think that's enough. I really would caution if this is the best direction for this county. And, yeah, that's all I got for now.
I think when I first started to make a decision to run for county commissioner, at that point, I actually considered a five-member board as a good idea, and I still do, to a point. I don't know if it's a good fit for Currie County, though. I've looked at a lot of the way that the boards are set up. I believe there's only three in the entire state, counties that have five commissioners. I'm not certain on that, but I believe there's only three. And two of those three have been, in the press, is very unsuccessful. You know, to have five working commissioners that are being paid, I think would be a great plus to a county that can afford it. Because the liaison, the divvying up of different departments, and the liaison, and getting out in the community, and being able to work together, I think would be a huge asset, and I think it would, that in itself would forego an administrator. You know, I've also learned when I first started to run that, you know, I was always told that commissioners can't talk. We can talk. I think the laws in the state are broader on that than, than people in this county have been told over the years. Commissioners cannot try to lead another commissioner to make a decision, and no decisions can be made in those conversations. But you can speak broadly about things in the county. You just cannot sit and talk about a decision-making process about something. Commissioners can ride together in meetings. Everyone, before I ran, said we couldn't. We can. There's a lot of things that commissioners can talk about in a broad sense, but to lobby each other to try and change someone's mind on an issue is what is not allowed. Again, there's a lot to this, also, as far as getting this on a May ballot, because, you know, is the person that's going to run for the chair or vice chair only going to run for that seat? Are you going to have to be labeled on the ballot as, you know, Christopher Pash running for the chair's seat? Or is it a position, just running as commissioner, and then someone else picks who's the chair and vice chair? And if you've got a vice chair that wanted to be chair, but he got selected as vice chair, maybe he doesn't wanna be a commissioner anymore. So, these are all things that we would have to get straightened out before they could ever be on a ballot. I just, for right now, I just think there's, this is a huge uphill push, in my opinion. This is a huge uphill push. Again, this county cannot afford to have five paid commissioners unless this board was willing to take a serious pay cut. And I think when you get into limiting the field of who would be willing to run as a county commissioner, to be an elected official, to run this county, if you cut pay so that it's not a, not a livable wage position, and you offer a position maybe to someone that is, doesn't need the pay, maybe they're retired and they wanna just give back, but they're only, because they're only a part-time commissioner or a lay commissioner, they're only gonna be able to give 15 or 20 hours a week. I don't think you're doing justice to the system of even coming up to elect the five commissioners. So, I think for right now, my, in my opinion, I think this would need a lot more work to move it forward, and I think some boundaries would have to be set on how it's, how it's done, and promises would have to be made, well, not promises, but things would have to be put in writing, that if you're selected and you choose to do this, that you're going to meet obligations, because, I'm not gonna name any names, but I know of past commissioners that were elected, and all they did was attend a meeting. How is that benefiting the county if all you're going to do is attend a meeting? You don't know what's happening, even in the county. All you're gonna do is read a packet and make decisions based on the language in the packet, without investigating, you know, what's really going on out there. So, again, I think my thoughts are, I'm not saying I would be totally opposed to a five-commissioner board. I don't think Currie County, in this stage of our, of our lives, can afford five commissioners, and I don't think it's a good idea to have three of the five commissioners be limited in either a stipend or no pay, and two other commissioners be elected on a chair and a vice chair, without knowing how that's gonna work out, all the language of that, and what if this happens versus what if that happens on a chair or a vice chair. So, that's my thoughts.
So, I was gonna say, if there's questions, we'll take them. Otherwise, I'll bring you guys to a room and have you start discussing it, and make plans for the rest.
Can I ask some questions?
Yeah, a couple of things. Commissioner Boyce pointed out, this is again, this is again changing, proposing changing from home rule, from charter rule to home rule, and how that's gone down a couple of times, you know. Essentially, what this would be, would be to give the power to the administrator, to the director of operations, whoever that would be. It doesn't sound like Commissioner Boyce or Commissioner Pash is really on board with this idea at this particular time, and the February timetable of having something done to be on the May ballot is really, really pushing it for something it doesn't have buy-in yet. Ms. Schmelzer, you presented numbers in your, in your presentation, there was financial numbers, just throw some numbers out there, that drop the cost of the commissioner's office. I think the first question that needs to be asked is, is it worth it to the commissioners to accept, to that money? Is it worth it to literally change the entire way that Currie County is governed? Up to something you said, Commissioner Pash, my vision on it would be that you would have a commissioner elected from South, Central, and North County, and then you would have the chair and the vice chair would be elected from the county in large. So that way, people run for the chair, just as you were hashing it out, you know. This is the way I had envisioned something like this going. So, you know, you might end up with three representatives from South County. That's just the way the chips fall. But, you know, at least that way, there's somebody from each part of the county. You know, if you and I were commissioners, lower road would be well represented, you know, but not much other geographically. But, you know, I'll pass this along now, I know other people have questions as well. My, my concern is that without your, at least two of you appearing to be positive on this, is there really any point in us continuing going for, you know, with this? So, but let me pass this over to you.
One of my questions, how many times-
If you would, please, for the record, sir, your name.
Bill Strousky. One of the questions I have is, you know, how many times has the two-person problem been, you know, two of you can't get together to discuss something? How often has that been a problem?
I don't believe with this board, it's been a huge problem. Certainly wasn't the first two years.
I think this board interacts very well together. We do question each other when we're seated here, but in general conversation in the hallway, I believe that we interact well, and we, and we interface with what's gonna be happening for the day. Commissioner Boyce?
Well, in my opinion, nothing has happened in the halls as far as conversations about what's gonna happen at meetings and so forth, so, but as far as having conversations about specific subjects coming up, I haven't seen much of that happen.
Right now, the three of you have oversight of certain departments. How would that work with the new setup of five people, three of them on a basically part-time basis, working for free, basically? How would you redistribute that responsibility?
That would be something that's, you know, a new, a new incoming commissioner, if you did a five-member board, you would have to have, you know, redesignation of all the liaisons, you know, making sure that if you're a commissioner at lay, and you're just a volunteer, and you take on a liaison for three different areas, that you're going to commit to take care of that, and I guess here, again, we're, we're kinda stuck with, well, what if he doesn't? Okay, what do you do, file a recall? Because you're, you're a commissioner, you know? I guess, there, in there lies the problem. Commissioner Boyce was next up, I think.
Hey, thank you. Hallway discussions, in the spirit of the, of the law, as we understand it, and the letter of the law, we avoid any kind of policy discussions, even on a, just an extreme caution, because we, the last thing we need is to be distracted with something we slightly misstepped on, totally unintentionally. The part of the issue I have, and I think this is related to your question as well, and you, I think you answered it, but I just wanna add something there. Any commissioner has to be equal to any other commissioner. I don't care what the circumstances are, in my opinion, or their vote is only gonna count partial, and every commissioner, be it three, five, or 18, is responsible to represent every part of the county, not just Goldbeige, or not just Langless, or whatever the circumstances might be. And I think, I never wanna lose that. I think that would be really detrimental. So anyway, I hope I answered your question, Mr. Straskey.
Sir, we had one more, Commissioner.
I was just gonna say, I have to relate some of my experience of working on other boards for years and years, and it wasn't just a matter of reading the packet and going to a meeting. It was a matter of individuals calling me at times, asking me questions, interacting with, with other folks, so I don't think that's entirely true of just reading a packet and going to a meeting. There's more involved.
And to be clear for the record, to be clear for the record, I'm not saying that we're having hallway conversations about county business. What I meant by that was our, our general conversation with each other is congenial now, where I don't believe it always has been. We, we get along personally well, so that this board interacts well with each other.
You know, how are we, how are you going to ensure that the entire county is represented, North County, South County?
That would be imperative.
Central County, how do you do it?
And that's, there again, what Mr. Barnes said, I thought was very insightful, where we, you know, if you were to do, and again, I'm not saying that this is what I would, what I would, the way that I would do this, but a commissioner from North, Central, and South County, you know, would be the three part-timers, and then you've got a full-time and a vice, and a vice chair that are, that are full-time, that's an approach to it. I'm not saying that I, I agree with the setup of having five commissioners in that way, but that would be an approach to doing it. Commissioner Gold.
And right now, all three could be from South County, or all three could be from Central, or all three could be from, from North County, so.
Commissioner Boyce?
But then the voters aren't gonna feel like they're represented.
Absolutely. Well, I, I understand that concern, and I think that's valid. But to answer your question, how do we know that we're representing the entire area? It either comes through in your heart, your dedication, your commitment, the time that you commit, or it doesn't. I'm a little bit familiar with the, and all the commission boards clear back to the seventies, the same system. We did used to have kind of an unspoken rule. Cessar Collins in the audience, and I think he could verify this, Shell Megson knows as well, but it was like, the Brookings folks would vote for somebody from Port Orford because they wanted them to be represented fairly and with justice, and they would not, they did not take it personal, or they did not beat the smaller parts of the county over the head with the majority of the population, as a general rule. Now, that's changed a little bit in recent years, but I hope I answered your question there, what my philosophy is on what our responsibility is and what our level of participation and effort.
And I, Mr. Straskey, I also would hold the board's feet to that fire. As you know, because you were part of it, and some agree and some don't agree with, we felt like the budget committee didn't, the North County didn't have a large enough voice. So we, we reassigned a budget committee to make it fair that North, Central, and South County all had an equal voice in how the budget was going to be done. And that's what we do, is we hold the board's feet to the fire on what is the right thing to do.
Okay, I have some more, but I'll pass it on.
No, finish. Well, I just, I wanted you to finish.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I've, I've got one. David Haney, I agree that the representation should include, North seems to get left out a lot, and that's just, you know, the way it goes sometimes, but it's not fair. As far as the at-large positions, let's say you have one, North, South, Central, and two people running for chair and vice chair. How do you determine, you know, I'm not gonna run if plus I can do this or, or that, so are both of you at large running for chair, and one gets it and one doesn't? Does the, the vice chair then feel, because, you know, he's getting half the payment or whatever, he doesn't have to work as hard? I just, I don't want people being put in that position, representing me. I'd rather everybody is here. I wish we had enough money to pay people well to do it. The county has other problems that need to be dealt with, but I, I don't know. What about terms? How do you determine how you're gonna do your terms, if you're all coming in at the same time?
Well, it'd be another thing, is you'd have to find a way to stagger the term, maybe, you know, if you're voting and three new commissioners, one, one goes on the next cycle and is only a two-year term on his first, their first term. I mean, there's, there's ways to figure all that out, if it was to ever get, my, you know, to that point, my, my comment was more to Ms. Schmelzer on this docket for, for this election cycle. I can't imagine this ever making it, because there would be just so much to logistically work out. And, and again, reiterating, you know, who would, how would a vice chair and a chair both run? Would you run for just that seat of chair, and someone else run for just the vice chair seat? And then the at-large is, you know, I don't know how to structure all that, and I can't imagine that being done, probably without a vote of the people to even get that done, so, there may be two or three different votes in this to get it to a final stage. But again, I, I just can't imagine seeing this getting done in the short term.
Do people feel that a part-time commissioner or a volunteer commissioner has, has the same power as somebody who's the chair or vice chair and getting paid?
Well, I think any elected official should have the exact same power as anyone. I, as a chair, I don't feel my vote is any stronger or weaker than anyone here. And if I wasn't being paid for my job, if you're an elected official, and you've decided to not be paid, in my opinion, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, your, your voice is a, is a one share of that five-share count.
I agree with that.
Commissioner Boyce?
But the reality is, you had a couple commissioners said, we'll work for $10,000 a year, and we'll work full-time. Well, that did not happen. And so we had two years where we lost time, and I can give you tons of documentation. I don't wanna beat anybody up here, I just don't wanna go down that path again, I'm not interested. It's detrimental to this county, the facts are indisputable, and I'm, yeah, I just have a concern we might head that direction again.
I agree.
Doesn't work.
And I just want you all to know, I'm not 100% opposed to a five-member board. I'm probably much more leaning against it than I would be for it. I am totally opposed to an administrator. I am totally opposed to an administrator. Administrators.
Okay. All right.
I've talked to a lot of people, and there's people that think it's a good idea, there's people that are still concerned about home rule, the vote, and what happened then, and so it's kind of a split area. I think this committee here should have a separate little meeting to discuss this amongst ourselves. to discuss this amongst ourselves. It seems like, you know, time is getting short if you're going to go for this. So time's at the essence. We probably should have had a meeting prior to this meeting. And I'm certainly open in my schedule and time. But there's several good points, and there's several concerns that the public had. And there's, the three of you, you've come up with different aspects for or against, but not heavily against concern. And so that's my suggestion, is that this committee have a meeting ASAP to get back to you.
Commissioner Boyce?
Well, I know, and like every one of you, and I'm very happy, appreciative that you are willing to serve. And on this private meeting, I'll just ask you one small favor. And that is, if you think, and I don't have, I'm not trying to persuade you here, but if you think that whatever direction you recommend, if any, it'll bring this county together in a productive, united way so we can get some business taken care of and keep the momentum that we've gained this last 13 months, then that's the recommendation I'm going to ask you to make to this board and to the citizens. And I'll get behind you. I just need you to really do a serious evaluation on that. That's my personal preference. Yes, sir.
I was just curious, on your workload, if you had a paid assistant that was elected to come in and help you to carry your workload, would that take care of any of the problems?
You know, I think we spoke about that with Ms. Schmelzer when she first came in, because we were, we do create a lot of questions, and we create a lot of paperwork. And because we can't sit and really talk to each other about the issues of possibly bringing someone in that could kind of run between offices, do paperwork, those kind of things. And I don't know, I don't think it would have been enough. I got to tell you, and I want you to please to take this with you if you do have a meeting. I believe commissioners have to be full-time. You cannot be a part-time commissioner. You have to be willing to.
I agree. I don't know how you can do it otherwise.
I've got meetings that I'm going to at 7:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night. And anyone that's dedicated to their job knows that you're not going to do this five or six hours a day, three days a week. You're just not going to do it. And if, you know, if you're going to sit there and do the job, you've got to be willing to say whatever it takes, and that's it.
We knew that going in, right?
Yeah. So just, I would just ask you to please keep that in mind, that, you know, this is not a part-time job, and I don't care. If you're doing your job right, and you're taking care of the things that are best for this county, you're going to be here five, six, seventies a week, 10 hours a day.
That would be my concern too, because the three commissioners that would be working for no pay, just for the N, some travel costs, are they going to have the same level of commitment as the two that are being paid? And one person's being paid only half. Will he have the half the commitment of the chair? Public might look at that and say, "What are you guys doing?"
And?
I guess the question is, what's broken that needs to be fixed here? Is this fixing any problem besides a budget shortfall? It can be fixed by tightening up other expenses, possibly?
Two things, I just wanted to comment on the assistant role. You know, we have talked about that a little bit, because sometimes you get commissioners in who, they want stuff typed, they want this done, and they want staff to do it. And when somebody becomes a commissioner, they have to realize they are their own secretary. You know, so if you had someone in that role, I think the concern always has been, because we have seen it throughout time, is you get a paperwork-heavy commissioner who monopolizes the time. So to have an assistant to help them, it doesn't, it hasn't worked out. I don't know how you would make that work.
Yeah, I was thinking more along the line of basically an assistant commissioner, where if you have certain meetings you have to go to, and you've got too much on your plate, you can actually divide off and say, okay, then this is going to be your responsibility, report back to all of us, and not somebody to push papers. But, you know, to actually meet and, you know, fill in when one of you can't go. I mean, I totally understand, you know, your 100-hour-a-week type jobs. I don't think you could do it part-time. You can show up for the meetings, but you're not going to accomplish anything.
Another issue that I can foresee, as you just brought up, Mr. Strasky, is, you know, you've got a commissioner that's part-time on a per diem, and he's done a lot of work on three or four different things. And every time he comes up and comes before the board, he gets a no vote. I mean, even though you're elected, I can just see that person just giving up and saying, you know, "I'm not getting paid for this anyway. I was enjoying my life. I don't know what I did this for. I'm out of here." You know, or, "I'm only going to work 10 hours a week, because they don't listen to me anyway."
And they're not paying me, so why worry about it?
Right. So I can see these kind of issues being huge.
We're getting back to my question, you know, what's broke? It's common, besides a legislative issue. It could probably be fixed by cutting and tossing other departments, possibly.
So that was the second thing I wanted to comment on. We're not saying anything is broken. What we're saying is, will you take a look at it? Will you let us know if this is something we should be bringing forward to the voters? The example you have in front of us is just one of many ways something could be structured, if you even think it's something to be structured. So this board is looking at saying, "Let's ask you what you think and bring a recommendation back to us." Maybe that recommendation is just, "Don't do anything. Leave it the way it is." Maybe it is, "Make sure you've got equal representation." I don't know. That's why we asked you to be here, so we could get you together, give you this background information, and then hope you'd meet and discuss it, and not necessarily come back with an answer today, because I don't think we're going to have time. But actually, maybe it'll require another meeting, maybe you'll need more resources, but get back to us so we have some direction on what to do. You know, we started the process, it was the end of November, which, of course, we had more time at that time to do something if that's the direction you recommended. Now we're really pushing up against a timeline, but maybe it's something we address next year. I don't know. Maybe it's going to take a long, maybe you say, "Yeah, this is something we should do, and it's going to take a year to research." That's fine. We just want to know what you think, and then give us a recommendation, give them a recommendation.
Commissioner Boyce?
Do you want to check, Ms. Chair, see if there's anyone in the audience that would like to offer comments?
Mr. Cullen?
Thank you, Chair Pash. Jim Cullen, Curry County Assessor, for the record. You know, I can't say whether or not I really favor this proposal or don't favor it. But it does appear to me that the proposal really is not ready for primetime. And it becomes more and more evident as I listen to this committee's questions, for which there really hasn't been any answers. My biggest concern that I wanted to come to you today was, what's the rush? You know, Curry County has been operating under our current form of government for 160 years, 160-plus years. It's not that there should not be a change at some point, but what's the rush? I mean, it just doesn't seem like there's any way that you could get this ready for a vote in May and have a reasonable public discourse. I mean, we're in here talking about it today with less than 20 people here. And for a change this big, I really think that you need to consider giving this plenty of time for the conversation. And, you know, there again, it's like Mr. Strasky says, at least today, this proposal really looks like it's a solution in search of a problem.
That proposal is just an example, though. Everybody needs to keep that in mind. That was just an example of something.
There's just not enough detail. I mean, one of the things I do appreciate about Director Schmelzer is she's a real think-out-of-the-box sort of person. But I just don't think this one's ready.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clay?
For the record, Gordon Clay. A volunteer county commission smacks of classism. There are only certain people that can do that, that can work for free. It eliminates most of the people in Curry County from serving on the Board of Commissioners. And I say, you either go 100% volunteer, and you're going to have a certain class of people running the county, or you go and pay everybody. If they want to give the money to charity or something, that's one thing. But make it available to everybody. I don't have to make $10,000 a year, and I could be on the commission to represent most of the people in Curry County. So that's my thought.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Megson?
You might need to adjust that microphone.
No, she's a tall girl.
I'm not tiny, I just know that. I make no claims of altleness and that. I have a lot of notes here, and instead of trying to read that over, I'm going to hit the major points. I like the idea of a five-member board, because you can talk more freely. However, done in this manner, and done in any way, shape, or form to where any of the commissioners are paid less, treated differently, I'm not going to be in support of that. First of all, if, let me set that down without trying to make huge noises, and I can't. Anyway, so they're big noise. First of all, in our current, in our current structure, being the chair doesn't mean anything as far as power. And I think everybody knows that. What they do is they are the voice when it says, "Hey, it's time for the meeting, and we, let's keep on track." And sometimes they have signature authority, because there's only one line on a contract. Other than that, the chair has no additional power. And if you go to anything, in my opinion, that separates the chair and the vice chair from the rest of the commissioners, we now have a perceived power. And that will create animosity that we need more of inside this room, like we need seals on salmon boats, all right? We don't need any of that. We don't need any animosity. We don't need any more separation. If we could afford a five-member board, I'd love it. Having a new car is really cool, too. But if we can't afford it, we have no business doing it. In my opinion, as soon as you make positions to where it's mandatory that they are making less than a living wage, then you are creating that separation. You are creating the animosity, which you hope doesn't happen, but we are humans. And then you're automatically telling the people, the working people that have to pay their mortgages, and the kids, and the taxes, and the car insurance, and the groceries, and everything else, that have to do that out of their paychecks, you're automatically telling them, "No, you're not rich enough. Don't run." The working man is immediately excluded. And I'm not going to agree with that either. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Sheriff Ward?
I regret this, standing up here and talking about it, but in the past, I mean, up until recently, you know, we, having three commissioners is like herding cats when trying to get together and try to take care of some business. You add two to that mix, it seems like it's just going to be that much more difficult. And in a small county like ours, it doesn't make sense to go to a five-member board. Maybe in a huge county that maybe population-wise is over 200,000 or something like that, where it's more diversified. But in our county, a three-commissioner board is basically, in my opinion, the only way to go. When we talk about representation from each part of the county, I think that's a pretty easy fix. The current board, basically, I know, represents the entire county. You guys worked on that Flores Lake deal, and had people down here all the time. And you guys did a great job on that. But if you structure it where you, the election portion comes to the North for the North, Central for the Central, the South for the South. And when it comes up for time for, say, it's one commissioner, and that person's from the South, and that South gets to vote on who they want for that position. You still have your North, and you still have your Central, vice versa. I mean, I don't know if that works, but it seems pretty simple to me. Just like, that's about all I got to say about that.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Mr. Cullen?
I'll just say, after listening to all the concerns, I don't think it's ready for primetime yet. I agree with Mr. Cullen. So that's where I'm at.
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
I'm listening now, and I hear two commissioners opposed, one on the fence. We've heard from two other elected officials who were opposed. We heard from two members of the public who were opposed. I really question whether, I wonder whose responsibility this is to put this question forward, whether it's the commissioners, or whether if there's a citizen's group out there that really thinks this is the way to go, that they should be the ones to move this forward. But I don't really, it doesn't seem like this is a question that, you know, that's going to be answered today, not without a whole lot more input, a whole lot more people. And I just, you know, if you were to table this today for somewhere next year down the road discussion, I don't. If this is the only time I serve on a committee, and it's for 25 minutes, so be it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
And I think that's why we have you here, is we want the citizens to talk about it. We want the Citizen Revenue Task Force to discuss it and bring a recommendation back. Maybe as a group, you talk about it, and you're like, "Yeah, this, we're just not ready for it." That's fine. We just want some direction from you.
It seems like the board is saying they really, are you even looking for direction from them at all anymore, or are you just saying, "Forget about it"?
Well, I mean, I'd like to hear their comments as a task force.
I don't think, I don't have enough information. One of the things I like to know is, how many counties went from three to five? And what kind of problems did they experience?
And that would be part of your research as a group, as a committee. We're asking you to look at that and bring it back. And if you feel as a committee that that's something you don't want to take, that's fine. When this board did discuss it, they had said earlier they wanted you to look at it.
It's up to you. Do you want to even move this forward at all? Or would you rather say, "You know what? This is something I'm not interested in pursuing right now, and let's not look at this."
You guys want to leave your room somewhere and discuss this briefly?
Yeah, we're going down to the program room. It's been 10 minutes discussing.
Can we recess for 10 minutes?
Yes, sir. Well, we'll actually go on with another part of the meeting, and then when you're back, let us know.
I doubt we'll have any answers today.
Sure.
I would just say.
If we can just take a five-minute recess, I'll let you in the, there's a small meeting room up here if you want to meet in there.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair?
So you guys are a board or committee. I think you need to have that be a public meeting, and have it be recorded in minutes and stuff.
If I may, I think we need to just bury this today, at least for six months or extend a period of time that the board can agree. Why would we compromise what we've got done this year? That's my apprehension here, my concern. And to have them do a five- or 10-minute meeting, I think we're wasting their time.
No, what they're going to have a five- or 10-minute meeting on, Commissioner, is if they even want to move forward with it or not.
I think we could help them out right now and spare their wasted time.
Okay.
I think we spotted a meeting, it's, I think it's for the wrong reason. I don't see a good enough reason to do that, other than to save $200,000 a year. I'm not going to spend that and be adjusting this thing.
Well, my only other reason was because you can't talk to each other. We need to just, very pocket tape recorder. Anytime you're together, you record it. And John, who puts it in the file, if anybody has a question, just, I think they could not listen to it. So you guys were inspired.
Right.
It's not a paper. I doubt you could have spent much time inspiring.
Oh, so for now, it's tabled, then? It's tabled? Okay.
Consensus?
The consensus is that it's tabled. Thank you.
That had value in and of itself.
I've heard that word "tabled" a lot lately.
You made the motion to bring it to them and have them bring a recommendation.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
I'd love to talk to you.
It was really called.
What's up?
I think your heart's right on this.
I think your heart's right on this. There didn't seem to be any broad-based support for starting it to begin with.
Yep.
How you feeling, Coach?
Oh. Is that all?
That's all, huh?
Yeah.
Did you get the pictures I sent?
I got a horse you can...
Did your cow hit you or something?
Don't have it forever.
I got a horse you can come on.
Don't have it forever.
I got a horse you can ride a little while if you wanted to loosen it up.
Oh, man.
Yeah, I knew it was a cow.
Alright, so we're gonna move on with our workshop. Owner-absent property registration. Ms. Schmelzer?
Okay, this is an ordinance the board has discussed before. I think we talked about it maybe two times, and then we decided to send it to a workshop. We had it scheduled, I think it was two weeks ago, and then the board delayed it two weeks, so we're back to the discussion on it. You have the first draft, or I should say, the revised draft in front of you. And I do have some comments from Dave Fortman, our code enforcement officer, which I'll share with you. But just as an introduction, again, people have said they want us to... They don't want us to raise taxes, figure out some creative way to pay the bills. So what this ordinance does is... This is pretty common throughout the United States. We see a lot of cities and counties doing property registration ordinances. Some charge for the registrations, some do not. So this is following that same format. This one in particular was modeled off of one out of the Rogue Valley. They have these, like you said, over in the Medford area, Ashland area, and through other parts of the state as well. So what this does, in effect, is it says if you own property in Curry County but you do not live in Curry County, you will pay a registration fee. The ordinance has a fee of $100. One of the recommendations was to take the fee out and let the board establish that separate than the ordinance, but the draft you have in front of you says $100. And what it does is... I got the numbers from the assessor's office, and there was, if I remember right off the top of my head, I think it was 4,272 properties in the unincorporated areas of the county that were owned by people that do not reside in Curry County. So I was looking at... I asked law enforcement, you know, about what percentage of your cases are from people that don't live here. They said it's 16%, basically, is what's going through the jail this past year. Those were the numbers just for the last year. And I asked code enforcement, you know, what percentage of your people that you're dealing with are people that don't live here? And they're like, "Well, what we're seeing is about... Their violations, about a third of them are on property, vacant property." So, you know, you're getting... And in that program especially, we're seeing where the owner is absent, and maybe somebody's squatting on the property, or there's maybe nothing on that property, so it establishes as a homeless camp. But we've seen a lot of activity on those, and the question is, how do we pay those bills? How do we pay to have somebody visiting those properties, cleaning up those properties? So one thought was, well, let's do what other counties do, some of them do, and that is to charge for... To register the property, which alerts those... The sheriff's office and code enforcement that, hey, there's... In this area, we have a lot of owner-vacant properties. You maybe need to drive by this one a little more, keep a better eye on it, things of that nature. And then those registration fees, in turn, would help pay for the cost of patrol or the jail services or the code enforcement work that is needed to maintain those areas. So it's pretty simple. They... If you own property but you do not live here, you pay a registration fee. We ask for certain information from you. For example, do you have a maintenance company or... I'm sorry, like a private maintenance company that watches over your property? So we know if we see somebody out there, if it's a management company... I should say, management company. If it's a management company, we know they have the permission to be there. Basically, a way to open up that dialogue and try and minimize some of the problems that we're having. The amendments to the ordinance, which Mr. Fortman had suggested, was he had recommended that, under the definition of owner vacant, we make it very clear that it's where the owner does not live in the county. So, you know, right now, it just says it's a property that is not legally occupied as a landowner's permanent residence. And later on in the code, it explains that it applies to those that do not live here. He says, "Make it very clear in the definition that it is for when somebody does not legally occupy the land and they are not living elsewhere in the county." So that's a cleanup, which I think makes a lot of sense, and it was a good catch. He does talk about maybe perhaps we need to define property manager or agent, and so he gives us a definition of that to add to the ordinance, which, again, is a good thing, I think. He does say that, when it talks about the non-refundable annual registration fee, he says that that should be left to the Board of Commissioners outside of the ordinance. That way, you know, if you change your fee schedule, you don't have to go back and keep amending this ordinance. He also talks about that maybe the board should look at certain things, like should the fee be different if it's been abandoned, left vacated, in default and/or in foreclosure? Should it be different if it's only occupied by the property owner seasonally or occasionally? Anyways, he gives us a list of five circumstances where maybe the fees could be different, which is a discussion I think we would have when we're looking at establishing fee. So if the thought is pull the fee out, now that's a discussion we should probably have when we talk about the fee. The other thing he does say and makes a recommendation on, which I agree with, is he talks about adding a paragraph which says, "All registration databases are confidential and shall be maintained by the Code Enforcement Division. Information from the registration may only be shared with law enforcement, fire protection services, emergency management, et cetera, and those other agencies necessary to assist with efforts to increase the availability of housing within the county or upon the property registrant's approval for the release of information." So those were his changes that he had recommended to us. Like I said, I think they're all good changes, and I think they should be incorporated into a final draft if the board decides to move forward with this ordinance.
Commissioner Gold?
I really like his idea of making a fee applied to someone who lives outside the county, simply because you have a lot of people who live in the county that have rentals, and I think that would be a huge problem. Slap them with a fee.
So before we go any farther with this with the board for discussion, I'd like to ask, is there any audience, public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Can't pull those microphones a little closer.
Just an FYI. Donna Henderson. I live in Brookings, and I'm not really sure if this is the type or the method to use to garnish money in order to address an issue. This fee registration does not really address the issue of vacancies or people going into unsupervised properties trespassing. I mean, there is a problem, but identifying a group of people to pay for a symptom of that problem, I don't think that's a solution. I think that if there is a solution to this, that needs to be addressed and not try to penalize somebody that's paying property tax. They've chosen, for whatever reason, in their retirement years to come here and build a home and retire, or they're speculating with property that they don't actually live in right now. For whatever reason, they've decided to buy property here, they're paying property tax, they're being responsible. But if this community or this county has a problem, I don't think it's beneficial to penalize them because it's not a solution. That's one opinion. I think that if you do want them to be registered, I really don't... Of course, what you said was, the whole point was to bring in revenue, so...
Well, it's to pay for the service that we're providing.
Exactly. To break... To pay for the service. So, yeah. So I think if a register was required, that there wouldn't, for the reasons that I've already stated, that they shouldn't be... Have to pay a fee. I don't think that there should be penalties. I think that people that pay their property taxes are honest, and penalties that would be brought on for circumstances that they're paying for that they're not... I just don't think it's reasonable that the penalties that are suggested, I think They're not fair. So unless some... Another topic, I have other ideas, but I think I'll just leave it at that for now, just see what progresses.
Thank you. Karen? Or Ms. Kennedy?
Karen Kennedy. I just had a couple of questions, just for clarification. So this money goes towards law enforcement, extra law enforcement?
No, it's actually...
It wasn't a general fund?
No, it's for those agencies that are currently addressing the problems, which is the jail, which includes some of the dispatch that are patrolling those areas, and then the jail processes, or I should say the staff.
So it's not necessarily for cleanup of property, it's for vagrancy?
No, and it also goes towards the code enforcement problem, which part of that is the cleanup of properties. It depends if that property has... If they have to do a cleanup on it. Right now, all the taxpayers are paying to clean up someone's property.
Do you lean the property when that happens?
No, we do not.
Why not?
That's a legal issue. I guess John would have to address that one.
Why are we not leaning properties when that has to happen?
We can do that.
The city leans.
I think it... I think this board's going to be dealing with that.
I... I mean, to me, that makes a lot more sense than...
We actually have done that.
To me.
Mr. Gold?
Some of the property that we've been cleaning up is like old RVs on the roads that are just left, so...
So that's not a...
Can't really assign that or put a lien on that.
Because that's basically... Well, is that basically in county roads?
Littering.
That would be county roads.
So this wouldn't apply to that, anyway?
No, it would not. The ones that... The ones Mr. Fortman was talking about were actual owner occup... Or I'm sorry, privately-owned properties where he's seen problems on them.
Okay. I guess if we're talking about law enforcement, I mean, if they're seeing 16% from non-residential, then 84% are from people that do live in the county, so that would be a bigger issue to me.
We'd love to raise taxes and charge those 84%.
I know you would.
Or I would. Let me correct that right there.
Let's see what other question I have. Sorry while I collect myself here. In your non-occupied, non-Curry County residents or properties, are you including timber companies?
Yes, it would include timber companies if they are not owned by someone in Curry County.
So that's gonna be a pretty good portion, I would think. So South Coast land would be excluded?
If we would go with the amendment... Actually, no. The way it's written now, they would be excluded, but with the amendment, it would be even more clear that they're excluded.
Okay.
As long as they're owned by...
But Warehouser, Menasha, all those would be responsible for faking. So they would pay $100 for every parcel that they own?
Correct.
Tax law, yeah.
Good luck. Okay, I think that's all the questions. I just had questions at this point, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cullen?
Jim Cullen, county assessor. I think Julie has shared a couple of previous emails regarding this proposed ordinance that I had sent with her, and it looks to me like in Ms. Schmelzer's revised draft, she's addressed a lot of those concerns that I had. I do... Mostly, I guess my concerns are process concerns. I'm not really sure how it works with a county ordinance. If you pass the ordinance and then you find out how it really has to work, whether or not you're gonna be able to make the adjustments without a whole lot of wrangling to get... Take care of what you need to take care of. To a certain extent, I think there's a lot in this ordinance that you may not realize is gonna be there, but let me just go through a couple of things. In regards to Ms. Kennedy's last question, the properties... I looked at the list that we gave you, Ms. Schmelzer, and I tried to determine which... Because the list had maybe 10,000 properties on it that we gave you, and so I tried to determine which the 4,000, 4,200 properties might be. And it looked to me like you zeroed in on residential-type properties.
Actually, I had your staff, I think, give me those numbers of unincorporated versus cities, and then it... Because this applies to all, whether it's residential or not.
Then you're gonna end up with a different number than the 4,200, and that's okay, as long as...
Be greater than, is what you're saying?
Pardon?
You're saying the number would be greater than?
Yes, yes.
Oh, one way.
As long as that's your choice. But it did look to me like... We gave you the list, and then we gave you a code for the property classifications, and it looks to me like you zeroed in on just residential-type properties.
I did not.
Okay.
Or if I did, I didn't... If the number is greater, I think that's good.
Okay, then I would have concern then if you're going outside of residential properties because, I mean, you'd take, for instance, a couple of commercial properties. There's the... What is it? The beachfront end down at Brookings?
Yeah.
And that's owned by an out-of-county property owner. Jots Resorts here in Gold Beach is owned by a county... Out-of-county property owner, and, I mean, those people are certainly taking care of their properties. And so you're gonna get some pushback in regards to those, and I think, you know, a lot of the timber companies that you mentioned just a minute ago, you know, I mean, they're taking care of their properties. In fact, some of them even hire their own patrols to go out there and make sure that, you know, they don't have people squatting on their properties and/or dumping garbage. So that's something for you to consider.
Just a comment on that while you're looking for your next note, there's Sester Cullen. The sheriff does have, I believe they do get some funds, like from South Coast, I think they do get money for some private patrols already.
Okay, I was... On your draft of the ordinance, it starts out with Exhibit A, and it starts with Article Two. Is there an Article One?
Okay, so the order that goes with this, which isn't part of the workshop, but it was with our packets before, so when we adopt ordinances, we have an order, and then attached is Exhibit A, which is the actual ordinance. And yes, there is Exhibit... There is Article One, so this would be a chapter in the county code. So that tells us, when we see Article Two, that tells us that there is already an Article One in Division 17... I'm sorry, in this division, already in the county code.
Okay. So one of the things that I see in this that, you know, may be more than what you expect is in Section 2.17020, under Definitions, Number Three, owner means... And it goes to say the lender or other party legally responsible for the property. That's just gonna be really difficult to track. We don't track it in the assessor's office. So we're not gonna be able to give your code enforcement officer a list on that. Under Number Five, the landowner having to live on the property for nine... the landowner having to live on the property for nine consecutive months. That seems a pretty high standard. But I know, I know you've considered that and that's what you've settled on. Number 6, and, and this is one of the reasons, and we'll find out that there's a fair number of properties out there that, that may be split either by a private road and, and the assessor's office would have them separated in two separate accounts. But it's still just one property. They took it under one deed. And that's certainly true with the large tract forest land type properties where one deed may have, have sold thousands of acres. But, but because of the way we map, those, those properties may be on several different maps. And, and so the property may actually have several accounts. I don't know whether or not your intention would be to, you know, charge them for each of those accounts when, in reality, they, they are just a single property. There'll be a few properties out there under Section 2.17050, occupancy determination. It says, and the owner is not a Curry County resident. There's going to be some properties out there where, through no fault of their own, the property owner is not a current county resident because they might be active duty military. So you're probably going to want to give some thought to how you might deal with situations like that. In the next section, .060, registration, Sub D, 1, 1 Sub D below, I don't know that you're necessarily going to need to require a copy of the tax bill. I think the second part, if they just give some property identifier, like the assessor's account number or map and tax lot number, should be sufficient rather than adding that extra paperwork in. Sub 2, what you're suggesting there is that the property changes hands, then the new property owner needs to, within 30 days, register the property. I think that's going to get really task heavy for you. My recommendation would be to just do this process once a year, if you're going to do it. And, and, you know, just deal with those properties that are, the property owners that are owners of the property at that time. Sub 3, in that same section, you say all registration databases are confidential. I'm just wondering whether or not you can keep them confidential. Because the basis of your information is, is assessment records, and they're certainly not confidential. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I just don't know whether or not you can really promise that and, and make it stand up. In Section .090, violations or penalties, Sub 2 there, it says, public nuisance may be subject to additional penalties. Maybe you have the, those additional penalties defined somewhere else in the county code?
It is, Jim.
Okay. And then, if a property owner wants to appeal a decision of the code enforcement officer, the appeal is to the County Board of Commissioners. And yet, you seem to be requiring that a property owner would turn in his appeal to the Community Development Department. I think those appeals probably, in my opinion, should go directly to the commissioner's office so you don't add a bunch of middlemen into the process. I think that's all that I have on this for now. You know, mostly, you just process concerns. If ordinances allow for you to address those at a later date adequately, then, then you're probably okay.
I'd like to just respond to some of those, Jim, because maybe we can, the purpose of the workshop is to come to some, you know, to work these things out. So I'd just respond to some of them and give me your feedback on them. One of the things you talked about is the definition of owner, because it says, or other party legally responsible for the property. So that, of course, is taken from other examples that we've had. I believe that refers to, you know, if something's an LLC or some unique partnership or something that doesn't fall under the other parts of the definition. So that's something I could take a closer look at. But I believe that's why it's written the way it is, is to include different types of partnerships or corporations or...
I think my biggest concern was a lender because we don't track those.
Well, sometimes you would have, if something goes, sometimes a bank will own property though, don't they?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Most of us have mortgages on our property, right?
Right.
And, and that would be the lender. We just, we don't track those in the assessment database. So you're not going to be able to get that list of those people from us.
Okay, but if a bank owns a property, I'm not saying, so you have a mortgage with a bank, but let's say the bank takes it back. It's going to be in the bank's name, is it not?
I think generally, the bank leaves it in the owner's name until they sell it at auction.
Okay.
I bought them off the courthouse steps. It's, it goes to the mortgage company.
I know the money goes to the mortgage company.
No, they, they deed them to the mortgage company. They changed the deed. If they take possession, they change the deed.
And I know I've looked at...
In my, in my experience.
If the mortgage company is a successful bidder at that, at that auction.
So I guess that's why it's in there because sometimes you do have a bank that owns a piece of property.
Yes.
So when they foreclose, doesn't it automatically go to the bank's name? I'm sorry.
Blurt it out.
I believe it does.
Okay, so let's move on with this because we are getting on some time constraints.
And then, just on permanent residents, it says that they have to be occupied nine consecutive months. Just for clarification, and we talked about this once before, the reason why that's in there is, what I found interesting is in the state of Wisconsin, there is no uniform definition of residency. You know, DMV has something different than some of the other programs. So I went with the one, I can't remember if that was the DMV example, but that's where that came from. With the military, I'll have to check and see if their residency changes. My understanding was they remained a resident where they were, but I'll have to check into that.
What happens is they give us a different mailing address than their home address, and these are going to show up on this list.
So I'll, I'll look into that and see what we can do with that. That's really a good, a good point. As far as if the registration changes 30 days, file a new one with the county. I agree with you 100%. That was added, I think, after our first draft by somebody. But we can look at that and see what other people are doing. As far as confidentiality, that's, we talked about adding that section today, but that's a really good thing. We'll have to make sure we have a legal look at that before we actually put that in the final draft.
I have a question about the residency.
Yeah.
If I could. So how does, what if we, we have a rule for residency for, I think, elected officials, elector of the county six months prior to the election or something like that? And I thought we have, did you say you took this nine months from Wisconsin?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant Oregon.
Oh, Bedford.
No, I'm sorry. When I was looking at all the, where Oregon declares, I'm dealing with a residency issue in Wisconsin right now.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
So in Oregon, there is no uniform standard definition that I could find.
Of when someone is resident. So we put nine months. And then, so what if people live here part-time? I mean, is it a rolling nine months? Is it, let's say I live here for nine months and then I leave, or I live here, is it, you know, if I come, come back? Trying to think, because we have a lot of people who are here and then they're not here, and then they're here again. Yeah. Well, that's six and six, so I think that would be okay. But what if it's nine and three, and then nine and six? And, you know, what if it's not just exactly perfect? Yeah. So could somebody game the system, basically, by just living here for nine months and then taking off and coming back for another nine months?
Well, in this, the way the definition is written right now is it's consecutive months.
Okay.
So that's, and again, we can...
And these are only suggestions.
They're only suggestions. We, but that's the, so we want to do that. Just the last thing, Jim, is just a comment on the appeals. You know, we did have it written that they would appeal to me and I would forward it on to the Board of Commissioners. And with the first set of comments we took, people said, well, that's wrong. You shouldn't, it shouldn't be going to you. It should be going to the code enforcement officer. So we changed it to say the appeal would be filed with the code enforcement officer, who is the one who would actually be enforcing the ordinance, and then be forwarded on to the board's office. So that's why it's writ, that, so it does say... So that's why we changed it from the original, which said BOC, to code enforcement. And you're suggesting, or your comment was, it should really go to the Director of Operations and be forwarded to the board's office, correct?
Yes.
Which is something we can consider. The reason why we changed it to say code enforcement officer was he's the one enforcing the ordinance. So if they have a problem, they should file it with him so he's aware of it, but we can change that.
And, and maybe it's a potato, potato thing. I mean, the revised draft that I have, I thought said that appeals are going to be going to the Community Development Department, which is not even the code enforcement officer.
The one I have says code enforcement officer. But it could have...
Okay, maybe you change it again.
There were a couple drafts, there were a couple drafts.
Okay, okay.
She's making your changes, excuse me.
Yeah, I have been, every time we...
Which I really don't agree with because it's an appeal of a decision made by the code enforcement officer, really. And, and so you would like to think that my appeal of that decision would go to an impartial third party.
Yeah, I know, like, in the planning department, you know, if you are agreed by a decision of the planner, for example, that gets filed with the planning director or the, the department head. So this kind of follows the same thing. It, to me, it really doesn't matter where it's filed. But, yeah, we can look at that and just maybe see how, how it's done with other codes or places.
Okay.
And those were the only comments.
Yeah, really with regard, regards to this ordinance, the assessor's office isn't going to be administering it. So it's a policy, policy decision of the board and, and, you know, I'm not really trying to make any comments in favor of or against the policy. Once again, you know, you're thinking out of the box and we appreciate that about you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Boyce?
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Chair. This is a workshop, so good exchange there. And I saw you taking notes. You know, back to basics, our fundamental responsibility. No surprise, the sheriff mentioned it earlier today, public safety. And our original ARS agenda routing slip on this was, was some of these properties that are attracting nuisance and crime, squatters, all the above. I really appreciate Assessor Cullen, all the public comments we had. But Assessor Cullen and CEO, Code Enforcement Officer Fortman's contributions. I'm hoping the board, I, I started out real neutral on this. And the more I look at it, the more I feel like it is not the perfect solution. But it is a solution. Code enforcement, law enforcement is very expensive. And when you look at, when you look at where we were even two or three years ago with the squatter situation, these are not generally residents of Curry County that are homeless. We need to sort that out to the best of our ability and, and try our best to help those that are residents for whatever bad luck they've had and how they got in that situation. But if you just go into the Checkco Bridge on the northwest side, we have a, I'm hearing from, just in the last three days, three different citizens with what is going on on that, that southeast corner. And Fortman and I were going to go down there a week ago and we got rained out, basically. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a potentially dangerous situation for this county, and it's not just there. So I'm very concerned about property values going down. I, I, we spend thousands of dollars for visitor promotion. We see what's happening in the beautiful city of Portland, even equally, the beautiful city of San Francisco. And it's expanding, enlarging into places like Eugene and the suburbs. And so I don't want this, five years from now or five months from now, the county goes, wow, we kind of dropped the ball here. We didn't deal with this. This is the best idea I've heard come up in a long time. I really believe, Mr. Chair, that a lot of the absentee property owners are going to be positive on this because the money's going to be used to keep their property values up. Not so much direct connection or response to some of the, some of the blight, for lack of a better description. But I think they're going to be fairly positive. I don't make, I, I promise the citizens I wouldn't make political decisions. So if this, this, people are sorry that they supported me because I want to help take care of their property and this seems to be a good direction to go. I know it needs more work, but I'm going to give it full support. And I, I hope the board is, is also yoking up here and sees the value of, yes, this is a complicated thing. But we, we, you've already made a lot of progress with the input you've had. And so I don't know how much funds it will generate, but we're trying to find good, good support for a second full-time code enforcement officer. And we may need a third one. But how we respond right now to the issues we have in this county is going to determine if we push back and actually solve the problem, in my opinion. Thank you for the time, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Gold?
I am in support of this with some tweaking, of course. So I think it can be a good thing.
I would also ask that Ms. Melzer, go ahead and maybe take some of the advice of the comments we've gotten and change some of the language in this and bring it back.
Okay.
And I think she'll find support for it.
Mr. Clay? We're getting against the hour, just so you know. It's already 3:30 and we haven't even held our board meeting yet.
Right. And I disappoint because I lived in Washington County for the first 10 years that I owned the house down here. And I was told it wasn't consecutive days, but in order to claim that county, I had to be there one day over six months. And so I travel a lot and like snowbirds and all, they're here, then they're gone, and then they're here, et cetera. So that might be something to check with DMV law or some, to get an idea. But I think the consecutive months is really a different, difficult issue.
I think six months is probably a clearer, a clearer way to go as well.
And monitoring that particular part of the thing would be very difficult for the county. I like Jim's idea, once a year.
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you again. You know, Ms. Kennedy also serves on the hospital board. What a great source of pride we have for our county. The emergency room is open, the Main Street efforts that are being done. We want to promote and focus and encourage that. We don't want to, again, be looking over our shoulder. Very appreciative that Commissioner Gold brought up RVs, old RVs. Do a little research, but I think to get it in a wrecking yard or a recycle, whatever, it costs $500 a ton. So I think the average motorhome weighs 4,000 pounds. That's $1,000 to get rid of an RV.
But we get rid of 20% of that. That was negotiated. I negotiated with CTR.
So what, is there a cost that, that you can report to the citizens on old RVs that's not $500 a ton?
It would vary. Well, if you took 20% off that, that would be less $100.
I'm, I'm, what I'm saying, I may not have the correct figure. So maybe you could get that for the board. I'm, I'm very interested. And again, I also appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Anything further? All right, with that, this workshop is adjourned. All right, we're going to take 10 minutes and we're going to go into our board...